Call the meeting in order and welcome everyone to the City of Kalispell's Council Meeting for May five, two thousand and twenty-five. Can I have a roll call?
Counselor Hunter.
Here.
Counselor Nunley.
Here.
Counselor Carlson. Counselor Gabriel.
Here.
Counselor Graham.
Here.
Counselor Dowd.
Here.
Counselor Dolman.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Nunley, the new weakest.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda in front of us this evening, I look to council for approval. Mr. Dowd.
Your Honor, I move the agenda as published.
Second.
Second, thank you, Ms. Gabriel. All in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We have two items on the consent agenda this evening. The first item are the council minutes from the April fourteen and April twenty-one meetings. And the second item is bid award for Third Street East Improvement Project. This item considers awarding this project the amount of six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars to Knife River Corporation. Is there any public comment on either of the two items on the consent agenda? Seen unlooked counsel for a motion. Mr. Nunley.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Second, thank you. Mr. Fisher, all in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Carries. We have no committee report this evening, so at this point, I'm going to open the meeting for public comment on items that are not on the agenda this evening. So please step forward, give us your name, and give your comments to the council.
Beautiful day today, wasn't it? My name is Dale Bowles, and my contact information is on the April first, two thousand and twenty-five email that I had sent to you regarding the city parking lot at seven hundred, seventeen hundred First Avenue West in Kalispell. My wife and I have physically watched what's going on every night for seven continuous weeks from nine P M. to eleven P M. Wouldn't you want to help the innocent victims of what's going on down there? How might you help? First point, would you be able to produce an ordinance that limited the time the perpetrators and their friends could and do disturb the peace? Number two, in addition, could you produce an ordinance that would allow the Kalispell Police Department to give tickets for trespassing after nine P M. Currently, Kalispell Police Department can only issue tickets for felonies if they're committed in this parking lot or other parking lots. So this is a unique parking lot, and it may need a special time slot designation to protect the residents that are living very close by. Tonight, you may be discussing restructuring three streets in Kalispell, partly to limit drag racing and noise. The cruisers who are creating the problem on those streets are some of the same ones who are creating the noise situation in the city parking lot. If you've been brave enough to drive down Main Street Friday evening, you know what I'm talking about. Only they don't just cruise the streets. They also cruise in that parking lot. Most of the time, this congregating starts around nine P M. This last Friday night, at ten P M., there were at least ten of those big trucks in the lot at one time, and other vehicles, too. Finally, an officer drove in the lot and stopped. Seeing him, the vehicles slowly filtered out. The last truck to leave was one that I called personally to dispatch about doing a burnout several days before. Same truck in the parking lot. This is what takes place every Friday night in the lot. Seven weeks ago, when we started parking across the street from the lot, cars and trucks would gather to watch with excitement when the big trucks would trade off during burnouts to impress the crowd, without someone sitting in plain sight to report them, which we have done for seven weeks. The noise and the burnouts will certainly return to the disgust of the angry residents. Will you volunteer to sit and babysit these obnoxious offenders for the sake of these innocent families? My wife and I have done it for seven weeks. If we, if we all change out, we might do it maybe once a month for a week. I'm just saying, are you willing to do that? If not, put things in place to protect them. We owe it to them. It's not their fault. An officer must see the vehicle do a burnout before he can issue a citation. See the actual burnout. You can't hear it. He's got to see the actual burnout. Or you and I must physically see it and be able to positively identify the vehicle and be willing to testify it in a court of law. That's the only way they can get a ticket currently. Are you willing to do that? Are you willing to go through that process to try to stop this? This past Saturday night at ten thirty, there was a group of about eight vehicles parked, and everybody was out partying, throwing something around, hollering. Just in front of the fourplex, one of the big trucks with these big lights all over it pulled in and parked with his lights directed straight into the windows of the apartments. It's not parallel to them. It's perpendicular, so it goes right into the rooms of, of the apartments. They might have been fifty feet away at the most. The truck just sat there until five minutes to eleven, when an officer drove into the lot. Many times, they just drive by, and if there's no sound, nothing going on, they'll just pass by on Airport Road or down Seventeenth Street. Sometimes, they'll go into the lot. More than not, they just drive by, nothing going on, they just go on. But an officer drove into the lot, and upon seeing the officers, everyone exited the lot. This is the kind of behavior the residents must have to put up with, could be any night of the week, any night of the week. According to the data in the lake, redesigning the streets will take over thirty million dollars. Fixing this parking lot fiasco will take virtually zero dollars. But we need your help. Warm weather is here, and the residents will need to have their windows open. It can be louder than ever. Do you wish you were living there? There's a smaller parking lot just across the street on Seventeenth Street that has twenty spots and is located further away from the residents. There's no need for this large parking lot to be used after nine P M. Please don't have the attitude. Well, they live next to the parking lot. What do they expect? The people that have lived there have lived there for, for forty to fifty years before the parking lot was ever put in place. It's not their fault. Or, "These are just kids having a little fun," one officer told me. Just kids having a little fun. Having fun after nine P M. is not fun for the residents. It's just flat not fun. If you were living there, you would not be having fun. A tentative workshop has been scheduled for this next week on this matter. Please, please don't kick it down the road and just say the police can handle it. The police are frustrated. They could drive by there every five minutes. Those guys watch what's going on. They know when they can do burnouts and when they can't do burnouts. The police can't catch them. They're frustrated, just like all the residents are. Anyway, this is extremely important to the residents who have been abused because of the city's good intentions. Good intentions. I mean, I got, I got information before this lot was ever done, asking me as a landowner if I approved it. I thought it'd be great, just like you all thought it would be great, right? You thought it would be great because of Legends Field Sports Center, right? Additional parking for that. But that never, even in football season, goes past nine o'clock at night. So this is a casualty of good intentions. Your good intentions, my good intentions, we all thought it would work out great. It has, except for the noise and the turmoil. It causes every resident within hundreds, hundreds of feet of that property. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dale Har, eighty Buffalo Hill Drive, Kalispell, and a former council member from ninety to ninety-eight. Quite, quite a bit of activity went on those years. But the reason I'm here tonight is I want to pay you a compliment first, that, and I know the council doesn't get a lot of them, but last time I was here, we were talking about water rates, and you assured us that you would be able to double the water rates. And you have. Yippee. And they're still going up, and we still have water. The other topic is the plans for Main Street, and I thought just historically, a few things. I can't be here on the nineteenth. Unfortunately, I would like to be, but I think it'll be very interesting. This morning, I took a tour down from Center Street to Fifth Avenue, Fifth Street, both sides of the streets, looked at all the businesses, and reflected on what they were like when we redid Main Street. And that was from building to building, including sidewalks. And for three months, we in the business community operated our businesses out of the alley. I took out my first mortgage on our, our line of credit. I think after the first month that it was under construction, had to go back and get a second mortgage to maintain the few employees that we had left. And I can tell you, it was not a very pleasant experience for anyone on Main Street. Fifty years ago was about when I, we opened our men's store here in the K M. And at that time, or shortly before, Main Street was two lanes with, with not parallel parking, but angle parking. So here we are, fifty years later, and we don't like our four lanes, which have worked, I think, very well for those fifty years. We're going to put them back to, well, let's try it how it used to be. History repeats itself. Make a two-lane out of her, and might as well put the angle parking in. Make the sidewalks another four feet wide or whatever. Can't believe wider sidewalks. I mean, you have a hard enough time walking, or filling the streets now at the size that they are. So just a couple of things, but that's the main thing. In redoing this street, I ventured to guess in looking at the, at the health of the businesses that are on Main Street right now, that after three months of doing what you're planning to do, I would say easily thirty percent of those businesses won't be in business. If you put them back into the alleys, it's the only entrance that you have to your store. So, and I don't know, I don't know who came up with the plan. I'm thinking that there aren't very many people that got elected would come up with a plan like that if they had talked with any of the merchants. And I talked to about twelve different stores on my trip up and down, and did not receive one iota of support or encouragement to even think about this. It's money you don't have. It's money we don't have. It's money we don't have to spend. And when you look at what we were able to do, you know, we put in the trees, and I watched as I walked down the street with interest, the number of tree holes that have been cemented over. There's probably half a dozen trees that are dying or dead. You know, we can't take care of what we have, and you want to create a monstrosity and a holdup, traffic holdup. So anyway, that's, that's it on the street. The other issue is when you, when, when we, because I was on the council then, I didn't vote for it, but we said, boy, are we going to fix up First Avenue East. We're going to make that the prettiest street in town. You know, we'll get this project done, and you won't believe the number of new buildings and new businesses will occupy First Avenue East. You know, we had benches, and everybody said, oh, yeah, the ladies are going to get in their finest, finest wear, and the gentlemen will be in their waistcoats with their hats and their jackets, and they'll sit on the benches out there, evening after evening, looking, looking at the traffic going by. We had an alternative at the time we were discussing First Avenue East, and that was to put a four-story parking lot at the corner of Main Street and Center, on the, on the mall site, three hundred cars, three hundred and fifty cars, whatever. And what we chose was is a street that can hardly be snowplowed, one that hasn't changed hardly at all in the twenty-five or thirty years that it's been there. So I just, I encourage you to think about this. My golly, we've been there. We've done that. We had two lanes of traffic. The store that we had across from the First Interstate Bank has a parking lot, which went with the store, and we had a very successful business in there, but couldn't use the parking lot. And I'll tell you, when you get this two-lane thing going, the traffic will be backed up to where you can't pull in or pull out of the traffic lot, let alone park on the street. And there's no other parking. You know, you think, well, if we have, let them park someplace else, and they can walk over and go up and down Main Street. They don't do that. A parking garage would help, certainly, but not this, not this. So as you're cogitating, you could save yourself some time if you'd say, well, maybe we better rethink a public hearing. And like I say, if I had had one, one person say, boy, I think this is a good deal for us. I think it's going to attract a lot of people. So wishing you well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council. I'm Paul Royball, and this is Eden. We own one Main Street, Stockman Bank, Eleven Main Street, Abbey Carpet, and Thirty-five First Avenue East, The Lemon Tree, and three adjacent parking lots in downtown Kalispell. We're here to address the twenty-five million dollar renovations for Main Street. So we prepared a document that we weren't able to, wasn't able to send it. I don't know if you received it or not, so we're here to keep within our three-minute deadline. So we're going to talk to you about that, and so we don't get too off the track of this, but I'm definitely available for any questions from being here since December of two thousand and twelve to now, and very, very knowledgeable about the reality of a business owner, a retailer, and the struggles of downtown and the parking. And so.
Okay, I'm going to read this that we've prepared together. First of all, thank you for continued commitment to improving both the safety and vitality of our community. As the council considers applying for this grant, we hope that you would consider these things as well. Keeping safety and business practicalities in balance is important. There's no doubt that improving safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers is important, but some of the proposed changes, especially reducing traffic lanes and widening sidewalks, brings up some concerns. A good redesign should not only aim to improve safety, but also to ensure the street remains functional and accessible for business owners, customers, workers, delivery drivers, and emergency responders. Narrowing traffic lanes may help slow cars, but overly wide sidewalks can create new issues. They could make it harder for delivery trucks to park, limit emergency vehicle access, add winter maintenance requirements for business owners, which is a current requirement of those business owners. And then we also wonder where will the snow go, once it is actually snowing in our area. So we have some creative ways potentially to use grant funds if you want to move forward with actually applying for the grant funds that might not have these same issues. So maybe something to think about. Installing fire suppression lines in downtown buildings, this would improve public safety and make these buildings usable for restaurants, upstairs housing, and public venues, and could easily be done with the safety improvement money. This is free. Paul sits in his office and sees person after person running the red light, and so enforcing traffic laws is always an option. I don't know how we could do that, but potentially with traffic light cameras running, that could help. So there's everyday safety issues, and in his thirteen years in his office, he's seen these on the regular basis, and it's only getting worse. Exploring a one-way street option again, so this would be looking at east to west and north to south routes. That would take some of the traffic and move it to other streets, and would make Main Street more easier to flow, and everything could still be the same width. Transferring control of Main Street from the Montana Department of Transportation to the city, we realize that that actually has to look like maybe ma- making a change with the bypass, but it's something that could actually down the road improve things for Main Street vitality. As far as giving our seasonal economy and the importance of a flexible, livable downtown, here are a few more ideas that could strengthen both safety and business. We want to right-size the sidewalk expansion based on actual year-round pedestrian use. As this other gentleman stated, people are probably not going to be sitting out on the sidewalk at thirty-two degrees or less in the middle of the winter. So that's probably, it's going to be unusable space in the long run. We do like the idea of switching to diagonal parking, and this is going to create more parking for all of the businesses on Main Street, and that would be contingent probably on changing the D O T rights to Main Street. Also, it would be nice if we could modernize liquor license practices because at the current cost, people aren't going to be sitting out on sidewalk dining tables without something to keep themselves warm, and so that might be an option. In conclusion, the grant presents a great opportunity, but we must use it carefully. I urge the council to separate safety goals from revitalization goals and pursue each with the best tools and funding strategies available. With smart planning and true community input, we can make Main Street safer, support local businesses, and maintain year-round safety. And we do want to add one key component. Most business owners hesitate to support revitalization efforts because of the tax increases that generally follow improvements, and the profit doesn't always so quickly follow. And we can look at slower business during construction as part of that problem. So that's all we have at this time, but thank you for your time, and we know you'll have a lot to think about.
Thank you.
Don't know if this scared you. Good evening, my friends. My name is Kenya Akachak. I'm a longtime resident of Kalispell, and I would like to talk to you just briefly. I didn't, I thought this was a public hearing, and I'll be back on the nineteenth. What I have with me today are the Kalispell redevelopment plans since nineteen seventy-nine. I'm not sure if any of you have read them, and I'm willing to give them to you to read while you're trying to talk, talk through what's, what you're planning to do. My point is, I'm the owner of Deport Park Square. We bought that from the city in nineteen ninety-eight, and we developed it into a, what we called a, a new, modern look for Kalispell. I believe, other than Fresh Life, we were the last new construction in downtown Kalispell. That's over twenty-five years ago. What's changed? Nothing's changed. Kalispell has moved north. Shopping has moved north, and downtown Kalispell has been, remains in the same state that we had in nineteen, in nineteen ninety-eight when we bought. I was with Dale Har. I was one of the young bucks that took the cow out of Cowtown Kalispell when we moved from diagonal parking to four-lane parking. It was gruesome. It was tough on business, but we were successful. I would just urge you to think through the safety program that kind of covers for what you want to try to do in Kalispell. I'll return on the nineteenth. However, we are opposed, Deport Park Square is opposed to the plan as proposed today, although we're not opposed to some kind of redevelopment in Kalispell. And I realize there are strings attached to grant money. And so whatever you decide, I'm sure will be in the benefit of all of Kalispell, not just the downtown property owners, and not to the detriment of anybody else in the community. I one made, one last thing. We like to have parades in Kalispell, but I haven't seen any parades up by the box stores north of town. Same road. They're part of Kalispell. We are a family in Kalispell. We know most of the owners. Most of the owners are local, local people. They're not box stores. They're not corporates. And I would just comment that keeping in the spirit of being a citizen of Kalispell is what your job is about, in addition to all the other problems you guys occur. Being a spirited citizen of Kalispell is important. If you would like to read any of these community plans since nineteen, since nineteen seventy-nine, I have them available, and it's amazing that I've saved them all. But you're welcome to join, to see them. I'm going to pass them on to Amber at Nature's Baby. She's one of our tenants. She's going to peruse through them. But if you want to look at them and read through them and, and just see what happened many years ago, I welcome you very much so to, to have a handle at them, and I'm happy to provide them to you. Anyway, thank you very much, my friends.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ryan Ellis, and I actually came down here from Quorum tonight. I'm not a resident of Kalispell. I used to live here. My wife and I used to live here. But I am a resident of the Flathead Valley, and this is what I consider to be my city. So this is why I'm here. This is why I care about this issue, why we're all here. I think we should ask ourselves, what's the fundamental purpose of Main Street? Is the purpose for someone to go from point A to point B as quickly as possible? Or is it for people that live here and want to shop here, and business owners? And I think it's important for, you know, do, should we make it a thoroughfare for people to just quickly drive through? Or should it be a place where people want to spend time? And I think that's the fundamental issue that we're asking ourselves. As far as money is concerned, a tax base, you know, what makes money? People driving through quickly don't stop and shop, but people on foot, walking down your street, looking in windows, in my opinion, is what businesses are here for. And if you ask all these business owners, I know a few of them, I work for a few of them, personally, they don't get the foot traffic that they wish they had. And to me, like, very rarely do I make a point of coming And to me, like, very rarely do I make a point of coming down and walking on Main Street because, to me, it's not pleasant. There's a lot of cars, there's a lot of traffic, there's noise, there's exhaust, there's dust. And I don't go out of my way to be here personally. But I, if it was better, I would, is my point. And I think maybe to, you know, to make it fair, if we have this meeting about Main Street, we should be on Main Street. We should all bring our chairs, everybody bring a chair. We should talk about this on the street, middle of the day. Bring your children, you know. Is, is Main Street currently a place where you feel comfortable having your kids and walking around? And everybody's got a different opinion about that, which is why we're talking about it. I don't, to me, this is not a partisan, it's not a partisan issue. You know, it's not a bunch of, you know, hippies saying, yeah, let's have trees and blah, blah, blah. Like, you know, but there are examples around the country. You know, this is not a, you know, let's all come up with our own ideas, our own theories. You can study this, there's countless examples from around the country of different towns. Charlottesville, Virginia's one, I was out recently, they have a great downtown. Very vibrant, very walkable, very inviting. Like, to me, it was very inviting, it was a nice downtown to be in. There's a group called Strong Towns, they're a national group, they help different cities. I don't know what their politics are, but they, they're business-oriented. So they look at tax base per acre, you know, what makes money per acre? And they've proven that, you know, more revitalized downtowns are good for your city's tax base. So, and, okay, so I made a few points. Traffic volumes, Highway Two, you know, forty, fifty years ago was a lot different than it is today. This area's growing, we have tremendously more traffic today than we did. So to look at Highway Two forty years ago compared to today is much different, we have way more traffic. But there's also alternatives. We have the bypass, you spend all the money on the bypass to get traffic from point A to point B quickly. Which, in my opinion, should free up downtown to be focused on business and people walking with their families in a pleasant environment wherever they feel safe. Which is a long-term solution. Yeah, it's construction for a few months, it's gonna be annoying, it's a pain, but what do we want to leave to our next generations? Because I don't think currently it's the best use of space. Anyways, that's all I got, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. Good evening, council members, I'm Amber Roper. I am a business owner at thirty-five South Main, Nature Baby Outfitter. And as a local business owner in downtown Kalispel, I am in support of the proposal to accept some federal funding and reinvest in reshaping our downtown. To me, the plan isn't about turning Kalispel into big city. It's about making downtown better for the people who live, work, and raise their families here. It is about safety and accessibility and creating a place where families with strollers and seniors with walkers feel welcome, and where small businesses and local events can thrive. The hard truth, when I look around every day from both of my stores downtown, is downtown is dying. Not because people don't care about downtown, but we have made it uninviting. The sidewalks are narrow, so in the wintertime, that is very challenging with snow removal. It doesn't make it easy for us to do promotions and events and things like that also. Parking is limited, the amount of customers, we try to even shuffle from one store to the other four blocks away that cannot find parking and will not go the four blocks. We track, it's a lot. There are so many blocks that are sitting quiet, filled with service offices and empty buildings instead of shops and cafes or gathering spaces. And that vacuum is inviting loitering in transience, which is making the downtown feel less safe and less special. I no longer will allow my children to walk between the four stores by themselves, or the two stores by themselves. I don't feel comfortable. Those of us that are still doing business downtown are pouring our time, our money, and our energy to hold on. Not because it's easy, but we do love this town, we want to be part of its future, but we cannot do it alone. I want all of you to think, when you're doing this, can you name ten of the businesses downtown and what we offer? When's the last time that you chose to come and shop locally instead of the big chains north of Kalispel? And what are those reasons on why? Is it because you cannot find parking? Is it because there's a lack of options that are downtown? But that's what we're hearing every single day from our customers. As we all know, where you spend your money does matter. Studies show that local retailers return fifty percent of their revenue to the community. Big box stores, that's about fourteen. Local restaurants are recirculating about eighty percent. And here in Montana, small businesses employ nearly seventy percent of the workforce. And we're not reinvesting back in those businesses. This proposal is a catalyst, not to make us big, but to protect what makes us Kalispel. If we don't invest in our downtown, we're going to keep seeing more and more land go to national chains, more small businesses fold, and more of our town's character disappear. If we do this right, we'll rebuild downtown where families can gather, we can have crowds with events, we can have entrepreneurs take root, and the community thriving. We don't preserve downtown by standing still, we preserve it by investing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Troy Bungay. I was born in Kalispel, grew up in Great Falls, and came back here in August of nineteen eighty-six. So I've been here a while, I've seen a lot of changes in Kalispel, right, we all have. Well, I guess what I'd have a few questions first of all. So with this plan, if you changed it to, and I've seen it before as a kid, but if you changed it with your proposal as written, what are you gonna do with the snow? We all know what happens when it snows here, and as it is now, put it right down the middle. What's the plan for snow removal? I guess that's what I had, is my first question. If you have this diagonal parking, and traffic is gonna be backed up for a mile, how do you back out? How do you turn left? As a former UPS driver, these are all considerations that, you know, what are you gonna do? How are you gonna do it? More traffic, you know, as a delivery driver too, you look at the extenuating circumstances there, and it's like, I see a lot of problems, that's what I see. So, you know, it wasn't that long ago that it seemed like we did some upgrades to Main Street, put in some lights and some stuff like that. And I just thought, are we gonna, like, all the money that we spent on that, are we just gonna kick that to the curb and like, well, let's start over? I guess those are some of the things that are on my mind. And for me, I guess it's a hard no. I just, for those reasons, I wouldn't do it. I mean, I was just in Whitefish last week, and I was kinda up there for a chiropractor appointment, and I went for a walk. And some of the things that I notice in Whitefish is that, of course, ninety-three goes up, then you take a left and it goes west, right? So along Baker and some of those avenues up there, they have like a Thursday night jam or whatever, all the galleries and stuff, right? There's somebody jamming inside, and people can walk up and down in the bars and stuff. They all lift their windows, they all come up. And I don't know that their sidewalks are any wider than ours. But they're seeming to make some of that work. And I realize that that is diagonal parking, but it's not where a major thoroughfare goes through. Those are just streets where they park, pull out. And as for somebody who, you know, drove a big, you know, like a thousand cube is what we call it, it's like a motorhome everywhere around the valley, Big Fork, Whitefish, Columbia Falls, and Kalispel. I've been all over there. That's problematic. And in the summer, this place, I mean, the park gets two million people, and I'm not sure exactly what percentage we get through here, but it's a bunch. And I just, I just see all these problems. And I personally don't think that using the grant money with this proposal the way it's kind of pounded out, in my opinion, is just not the way to go. It's a hard no for me, that's really all I have. But I don't know, I mean, I don't know if anybody want to tackle that question, what are you gonna do with the snow?
After the meeting, sir, you can talk with Jared Nygren, our planner. We just take public comment at this section, sir.
Right on. Well, I'll tell you this, when they built the new UPS building, that was the first thing. Those guys down there, these honchos from Seattle, developed it all from satellite images, all of it. And then they came and showed up when it was almost done. And the way they built it, it's got this angle, you've got the old building and then the new building. And this guy shows up, and I just looked at him and I said, "So are you in charge of this whole deal?" And he said, "Yeah, yeah, I'm in charge." And I said, "Wow, you know, this isn't Seattle. What are you gonna do when it snows?" And you should have seen the look on his face, his jaw just kind of was like, when he realized, they didn't take that into consideration, not one iota. And so, I mean, everybody knows it's gonna snow here, you gotta have a plan for it. I'm not saying you don't, I'm just saying, you know, for me, that's a logical question. Where are you gonna put it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other general public comment?
Hi, Council Mayor, I'm back again. Kisa Davis in three twelve Sixth Avenue East. I'm also the current Chair for the Kalispel Business Improvement District. Last week, we gave public comment to support the letter of support that we gave for the application of this grant. Two things I want to acknowledge on behalf of the board is, first of all, the grant application we see as a continuation of and one part of the 2017 downtown plan that was adopted by the council. That plan is big. That plan has a lot of checkboxes that we understand as a community, we are tasked with going after. The Safe Streets for All grant application is a really, just could not be a more perfect opportunity for us to start that process. There's a lot that goes into redeveloping downtown and reconfiguring traffic is part of that. In addition to that being really one of the small parts of the 2017 downtown plan, we also see the reconfiguration of downtown as being an opportunity for us to leverage already existing TIF funds to redo the infrastructure that currently is failing and makes it extremely cost prohibitive for property owners to upgrade their buildings. So the wonderful communities and this wonderful ideal that we have for what downtown could be, how businesses could fill some of these empty storefronts, restaurants, et cetera, et cetera, it's not, it just doesn't pencil. When we look at putting code compliance measures into place for a historic building, you're talking about upgrading water service to that, you're talking about upgrading sewer service to that, and then stormwater facilities as well, it just simply doesn't pencil. I run a construction company, we've bid out some of these projects. And when we look at where that cost to complete the project is compared to what the possible rents or possible revenue for that storefront would be on top of the cost to acquire that property, it doesn't make sense, which is why so many of these buildings are empty. So we view the Safe Streets for All as one part of it. And yes, there's a lot more work that does need to be done to figure out how to not only best plan the work at completion, but also to best plan the work as it's being completed. But we feel very strongly that the Safe Streets for All grant application is one that the city should go after. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members, my name's Kyle Zeller, I live at ten twenty-seven Second Street. I'm speaking tonight not only as a resident and parent, but as someone actively searching for a home to rent in Flathead County and coming up short. What I'm seeing on the rental market is just not concerning, it's unrecognizable. I've come across listings here for ten thousand dollars, even twenty-eight thousand dollars a month. The cost per square foot on these homes exceeds what many local businesses pay in commercial rent. And these aren't luxury estates, not vacation compounds, just homes. Let's ground this on real numbers. The median household income in Flathead County is about eight percent lower than the national average. But a typical three-bedroom home, two-bath home here now rents for eight percent more than the national average. That means we're earning less and paying more just to live here. It's not sustainable. If we look at the value of homes compared to the rent they bring in, something investors call the gross rent multiplier, we see another red flag. Nationally, that ratio tends to sit around twelve to fourteen percent. Here, it's twenty or more. In simple terms, the cost of rent here is far outpacing what these homes are even worth. And it's a clear signal that our market is being shaped by more outside investors than by the needs of local families. This isn't just our problem. In places like Bozeman, Jackson Hole, and other locations around this country, we've already seen what happens when local housing becomes untethered from local wages. Nearly half of the renters there are cost burdened. Teachers, service workers, young families, entrepreneurs, they've even been priced out, forced to communicate long distances, excuse me, forced to commute long distances or even live in their vehicles. Is that what we want for our future in Kalispel? I wish I were here tonight, offering a ready-made solution. This is not my specialty, but I know we cannot wait for the free market to fix what is broke. So I'm asking you, our council members, with all the tools, resources, and influence at your disposal, to act. Other communities have found ways to protect their people, rent stabilization policies, initiatives for long-term rentals over short-term ones, and public-private partnerships to create housing that reflect local incomes, not vacation rental rates. Missoula's Housing Trust Fund is one example, there are others. We don't need to reinvent the wheel, but we do need to stop spinning it in place. This valley is worth fighting for, and so are the people who live and work here. Thank you for listening, I truly hope to continue this conversation with urgency.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Julianne Denny, I live at seven forty-five Fourth Street West in Kalispel. I have a question, I've never done this before, I'm extremely nervous, excuse me. I would like to know what our policies are for our Kalispel Police Department when they are coming across traffic stops or incidences where they have people who do not speak English. We've lately, here and across the country, have been relying on Border Patrol for that communication. But if you're aware of what happened with the man from Whitefish who was illegally detained, though he had all of his proper paperwork to be in this country and in this city, he was taken anyways, and he was returned recently, for which we are so grateful. But we want to know how we can prevent this from happening in the future. We have a number of people who have come here under asylum laws who work with Flathead Valley neighbors. And we want to help know how we can help these people feel safe when they've come here for asylum the right ways, like we always encourage people to do. And now they're scared that they're going to be taken for no good reason. And that's the question that I have for the council.
Thank you. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda this evening? Closed public comment, we're gonna move on to the first action item. And the first action, and just actually real quick, because most people, some are first-time speakers here. Sometimes we do give comments at the end of the meeting, I apologize, but we don't respond during the acceptance of public comment. But sometimes at the end of the meeting, during council comments, we will make a request or a comment to help address questions that we have heard. So I don't want you to think we're ignoring, we're hiding. So, first action item this evening is Ordinance nineteen thirty-five. Second reading regarding junk vehicles. Second reading regarding junk vehicles. This item considers an ordinance amending the current junk vehicle ordinance. Mr. Russell, presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this has been, two previous meetings, actually going back a little bit further. It was passed 5-3 on first reading. Basically, it adds additional definition under the junk vehicle and kinda streamlines, streamlines the abatement process. Normally on second reading, it would just be on the consent agenda, but that's when it's on a unanimous vote. So, as a 5-3 vote, comes back for, on the action section of the agenda. So, with that, happy to answer any questions that council may have related to this ordinance.
Any questions for staff? Is there any public comment on Ordinance 1935, second reading for junk vehicles? Let's see, none. Look to council for a motion. Ms. Gabriel?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move Ordinance Number 1935, an ordinance amending Kalispel Municipal Code, Chapter 19, offenses miscellaneous by amending Section 19-36, Junk Vehicles on Private Property, declaring an effective date, and authorizing the city attorney to codify the same.
Second. Second. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. During the first reading of this, I talked a lot about my concern about people in poverty and ability to, you know, afford taking the junk vehicle to the scrapyard, and we were informed after the meeting that the county does have a, a free program for that. And I believe there's another one as well that, that's in the, in the county. And so, I appreciate that information, and I certainly hope staff uses that if there is any enforcement action under this item, to inform folks of that before enforcement proceeds. I still have some concerns, though, because I know that people use an operable vehicle for the spare parts, for their other vehicle that is operating, to try to keep that one running when they're in poverty. And also, some folks just have a vehicle that they're trying to get running again, and it may take them a while because they struggle to afford the parts or whatever. So, I still, I do not feel comfortable about making it illegal to have an inoperable vehicle on your property. We talk a lot about being in your yard, a lot of times it's in people's driveway. I did have a proposal about exempting the first two, because I do believe there's, it's within reason, right? We shouldn't have folks with a dozen cars, or even half a dozen, or anything like that. It, it becomes a problem at some point. With the information that there is a free program for removing the vehicle, I'd be willing to move that down to an exemption of one vehicle, inoperable vehicle. That would be my proposal. I didn't have much interest on the two, so I won't make a motion unless I hear otherwise from folks that they might be willing to support that, that motion. But otherwise, I still will not be supporting the, the ordinance.
Other discussion? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I didn't support this on the first reading. I'm gonna continue that sentiment here. There's many different reasons, but the biggest one for me is unprecedented drop in the response time that the individual would have. Goes from 30 days down to 10 days in this case, and I don't see that anywhere else in code violations. So, I'm gonna go ahead and continue to, I'll, I'll continue to vote no on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Other discussion? Have a roll call vote. Oh, wait.
Councilmember Hunter?
No.
Councilmember Nunley?
Aye.
Councilor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Councilor Graham?
Aye.
Councilor Dowd?
No.
Councilor Dolman?
No.
Councilor Fisher?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Second item, Ordinance 1936. This is second reading for Community Decay Ordinance. This item considers an ordinance amending the current Community Decay Ordinance. Kinda redundant.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, really same concept as the junk vehicle. Both of these were presented as items that we have, currently have in code, and just could use some adjustment with language. This one does add the tall grasses in over eight inches and removes the date of July 1st as the enforcement window, and just leaves it as, you know, anytime it's over that eight inches. But with that, again, went to council on first reading and passed on a vote of five to three as well. So, with that, be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions for staff? Any public comment on Ordinance 1936, second reading for Community Decay? Let's see, none. Look to council for a motion. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move Ordinance Number 1936, an ordinance amending, Ordinance 1925, Kalispel Municipal Code, Chapter 11, Garbage, Refuse, and Weeds by amending Article 5, Community Decay, declaring an effective date and authorizing the city attorney to codify the same.
Second.
Second. Ms. Gabriel? Discussion on the motion? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, on the first reading, one of the concerns I expressed was regarding the exemptions under F2C, which reads Maintain and Cultivated Gardens. I didn't feel that that was comprehensive enough of scenarios in which people could legitimately have plantings that would violate this, but are, are good things for their yard, might look nice, and so on. We do have a different makeup this evening than we did on the first, first reading, and we, the, the motion that you made, Your Honor, failed by, by a tie vote of four to four. So, since it was so close, I will offer to make that motion again, see if we have a different outcome. So, I move to amend the motion so that F2C reads Maintain and Cultivated Gardens or Landscaping.
Second, because I made the motion last night. There, now we can go to the vote. Discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, I just say, you know, as I, as I spoke about last time, there, it could be naturescaping in which people plant native vegetation that wouldn't necessarily be a garden. It is just landscaping, but it could be in violation of this, and so, and we want naturescaping. Native plants are good, it's less, use less water, less maintenance, can look nice, and so I think it's, it's worthy amendment.
Ms. Gabriel?
Mr. Hunter, could you give an example of, of what that could be? What the cultivated landscaping might be?
Yeah, like I said, naturescaping, so this is native plants, you know, spirea and plant, spirea and other vegetation. You could even have bunch grass, which there's some native, a bunch grass out there. These sorts of things, again, not a garden, but native plants that, that's intentional, intentional, and that they're not meant to be mowed. And they could get, you know, get high, higher height, greater height? Yes, not, not, not the other height. We're not growing that kind of plant.
There's an example drive by my, by my house and look at the bunch grasses.
There you go.
So, I guess the question comes to my mind is like, what about like thistles and stuff like that? I mean, that's natural.
Well, it wouldn't apply to noxious weeds, obviously.
Okay, so...
Yeah, this is landscaping intentional. I mean, you can't, you can't, I think the county doesn't allow you to plant noxious weeds, right?
You're getting into the weeds on this one. Sorry.
Okay, you can leave. You can leave.
Soon enough. Any other, Mr. Fisher?
Who would determine before plantings take place if they're native or non-native? Who, who would be responsible for that?
We can add cultivated gardens or native landscaping if you like. I, you know, I, I think if we have an enforcement action, somebody calls, staff can go out and determine whether or not these are native plants or noxious, noxious weeds.
But typically, these plantings would be in an ornamental setting, in a garden, a flowerbed, or something like that?
Not necessarily. I mean, I, I hope to someday naturescape my yard if I could ever afford it, which I probably won't, but, and so, it, it wouldn't be something that's in like a, a planting. Now, I would just remove the, the grass and I'd plant native plants.
Mr. Dowd?
Councilman Hunter, can you read your mo, your amendment again, please?
Yes. Revice F2C so that it reads Maintain and Cultivate Gardens or Landscaping.
Okay, cool. So, this doesn't say anything about nat, natural. It can be non-natural. It could be a cactus, right? That's not common in this area, but I can have front yard cactuses if I wanted to. So, I, I don't, I think we're getting hung up on the natural. It's not even in the motion, so, this is my comment.
Other discussion? Have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Councilmember Nunley?
Aye.
Councilmember Gabrielle?
I'm struggling with this one, because I, no.
Councilor Graham?
No.
Councilor Dowd?
Aye.
Councilor Dolman?
Aye.
Councilor Fisher?
No.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, we're back to the original Ordinance 1936, but as amended. Mr. Hunter?
I do appreciate the passage of that amendment. I think it makes it a better ordinance, but is not so good as to gain my support. So, I still think that predominantly, while I, I can envision scenarios where this ordinance would be a good thing, I think mostly is going to be used for neighbors to harass their neighbors over differences in aesthetics and how they maintain their yards. And I don't think that's the role of government. I don't think that the, the harm that it's trying to prevent is such a enormous harm that we should be weaponizing, as I said previously, weaponizing local government in neighbor, neighbor disputes. If this were about fire danger, noxious weeds, it would be written very differently. It's really about neighbors, neighbors and their opinions about aesthetics of people's yards, and I don't support that.
Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm also happy with the amendment, but I'm also gonna vote like I did last time against this for the same reason I did for the first one. It's the, it's the notification period. I, I just don't feel comfortable changing that for just a few pieces of code and not for the rest of code violations, so, thanks.
But now it's becoming more consistent, Mr. Dowd. Other discussion?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I will go on record again. People put thousands of hours, hundreds of hours into their landscaping, into watering. They expect something different in the city. They expect their street to look nice. They want it when company comes it for it to look nice. They don't want their kids going into a yard that's unmaintained. I've seen this on the county level, and I expect this, and I think our citizens expect this even more within the city limits. I think it's part of our job, and I will support this.
Other discussion? Roll call vote?
Councilor Hunter?
No.
Councilor Nunley?
Aye.
Councilor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Councilor Graham?
Aye.
Councilor Dowd?
No.
Councilor Dolman?
No.
Councilor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is a three-part item. It's Montana Department of Transportation Combination Building. This item considers annexation, zoning of public, and a conditional use permit for expansion of an MDT facility at 2905 Highway 93 North. First item is Resolution 6251, which will deal with the annexation, followed by Ordinance 1937, which would be the first reading on the zoning, with the third item, which would be the conditional use permit. We'll have a staff presentation on all three, since they're all integral to each other, and then take public comment on all three items at one time, and then successively vote on the items in order. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I'll turn it over to PJ Sworson, our Assistant Director of Development Services, for the staff report.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Montana Department of Transportation has submitted applications for annexation, initial zoning of P1 Public, and a conditional use permit for the expansion of an existing facility located at 2905 Highway 93 North. The facility would include an approximately 28,400-square-foot new building, combining equipment storage, mechanics, and welding shops under one roof. MDT would continue to store salt and sand and other materials for maintenance at the location, primarily in the southern portion of the property. As you can see up here, it's just right at the intersection of Rose Crossing and Highway 93, where there is a relatively new traffic signal. In terms of surrounding properties, you've got the Armory to the east, Ford Dealer to the south, new Stillwater Bend development just off to the southwest, Northern Pines Golf Course, across the highway. There's utilities in place, there's water and sewer that are on three sides of the property. It's just a shot of the property from the north, from the access road back to the Armory. Current zoning is SAG 10 under the county, and proposed, again, is City P1 Public. And as you can see here, it's adjacent to the city limits on two sides.
PJ, I'm sorry for buttoning. I can't see this on my screen. Is it being displayed on Zoom for our Zoom participants? Okay, then, fine.
Okay. The Kalispel Growth Policy Future Land Use Map designates the subject property as urban mixed use. The proposed P1 Public Zone is intended to be utilized in any land use designation, and thus would be supported by the growth policy. The property is located inside the city's annexation boundary. The Highway 93 North Area Plan, which is incorporated into the growth policy, states that access, quote, "access" should be coordinated so as to allow only collector or arterial streets to intersect with the highway. The judicious use of right-in, right-out approaches, frontage roads, and good internal development street design should be the rule to reduce or eliminate the need for direct access onto major gateway roads, unquote. The conditional use permit addresses an extension of Quail Lane from Rose Crossing to the north end of the site, from right there to that location. This extension, in addition to reducing direct access to the highway for this facility, would allow for the continuation of a north-south road running parallel to the highway, connecting Rose Crossing to Eagle Valley Drive. Again, that would run all the way up to Eagle Valley. Presently, it's constructed to this point. This would bring it to that point, and the middle portion be completed when this property is developed in the center. This connection would help establish a better network of roads off the highway, funneling traffic to major intersections and preserving traffic flow on the highway. Without annexation, the road connection is likely to be, unlikely to be available. As I mentioned, the requested conditional use permit would allow an MDT combination facility that would include the 28,000-square-foot new building, combining this equipment storage, mechanics, and welding. Mechanics and welders currently at the Fifth Avenue East North Facility would be relocated to the site. MDT would continue to store salt, sand, and other materials on the southern portion of the property. Here, you can see the general layout with the building on the north, a lot of that storage area that would be down to the south. They would have some interior landscaping, and that existing access road would still run to the north, along with that new extension for Quail Lane on the east side of the property. They would have, you know, parking available on the site as well. As mentioned, there's water to the north, Water Main to the north. There is a possibility of some main extensions that might be necessary for hydrants, depending upon the fire review. Sewer is also available to north, and connections would be made in that direction. Stormwater facilities would be managed and constructed per the city of Kalispel standards for design and construction. As part of the proposal, access would be changed with the extension of Quail Lane, as I noted, which would be a dedicated public street to a local standard. The extension of Quail Lane would be a 60-foot right-of-way with the sidewalk, landscape boulevard, and streetlights on the west side, and curb and gutter on both sides. Additional improvements on the east side would occur when further development occurs on the east side of the new street. The proposal includes a 50-foot-wide access from Quail Lane onto the property to accommodate large snowplows utilizing the site, which would be addressed through engineering review as a potential deviation. With the new connection to Rose Crossing, the access from the private roadway on the north side of the property should be restricted. The applicant has proposed reconfiguring that approach to restrict traffic from turning southbound, and the reconfiguration- from turning southbound, and the reconfiguration should be included as a condition. Uh the specific design would be subject to review and approval by both the city and MDT. Uh just prior to the public hearing, uh the applicant stated that MDT legal staff had some potential concerns about whether state land could be dedicated to the city, and suggested that condition three relating to the right-of-way dedication be amended to add that, quote, "In the event that state law prohibits dedication, uh public road and utility usemen shall be granted to the city." Uh that amendment was approved by the commission. Uh due to the property's location along the highway, uh the zoning ordinance applies entrance corridor standards. On Highway ninety-three north, a reserved is a hundred-foot buffer requirement. Uh the regulation allows the buffer to be reduced so that it does not encompass more than ten percent of the property. Uh in this case, the width is reduced to fifty-nine feet. The buffer area is, in most cases, comprised of landscaping and pedestrian or bike trails, but can also include frontage roads intended to limit the number of access approaches onto the highway. Uh this proposal provides the Quail Lane extension along the east property boundary that aligns the road network in the area, uh accomplishing a primary purpose for the frontage road provision. Uh in addition, the proposal includes a ten-foot wide asphalt path along the Highway Frontage, along with an approximately thirty-foot wide landscape buffer. Uh I would note here, they were only showed it to this extent, but that buffer would need to extend the full length of the frontage from Rose Crossing to the north property line. Uh the provisions in the proposal satisfy the entrance corridor requirements. Uh the property currently has a screening fence along portions of the site. Uh screening should be maintained in order to appropriately buffer the facility from neighboring properties and from the traveling public, including along the Quail Lane extension. Uh any fencing should be installed in accordance with the zoning regulation standards. Um and then a- again, this is off of Rose Crossing, showing that existing fence. Um this is along the highway where that screening fence ends here, but they do have um some landscape birmingham that prevents, that presents some screening function uh along the highway. Um there was discussion brought up by the Planning Commission that was concerned with requiring screening that may or may not be necessary based on the overall design of the project. Uh so there was a motion to amend condition six, uh so that it would read, quote, "The existing fencing slash screening or the equivalent shall be maintained in order to appropriately screen the facility from neighboring properties and the traveling public, including along the Quail Lane extension. Any fencing shall be installed in accordance with the zoning regulation standards." Uh the amendment added this language, uh and locations for screening shall be reviewed and approved by the Architectural Review Committee. Uh that amendment was also approved by the commission. Uh it's just showing an elevation drawing of the building itself. And with that, the Kalispell City Planning Commission adopted Staff Report K twenty-five dash oh two and KCU twenty-five dash oh two as findings of fact, and forwarded recommendation to the Kalispell City Council that the property be annexed, that the zoning for the property be city P one public, and that the conditional use permit be approved subject to nine listed conditions as amended, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. PJ, could you go back to the uh image of the of the uh street with the berm there? Um so the ten-foot uh walking path that would go along the the highway, is that then on the east side of the berm, presumably? Is that?
Likely. I don't, th- they don't have a final design of exactly that where that would be.
But those power poles would remain, and the berm would remain?
Yeah, the power poles, that's actually in the right-of-way. See, the the buffer is actually where that fence line is. That's the property line. So the buffer is actually gonna be thirty feet beyond that.
Oh, okay.
So the 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 path will tie in right there. You could see it on the north side of Rose Crossing, the uh bollard there. And yeah, it'll likely be on the east side of that berm to the north property line.
Okay. And then uh I apologize, but you mentioned a no-left-turn something, and I missed I missed the details on that. Could you go over that part again?
It'd be up in this location up there. Um going to this, here, we're talking about this access. It was the existing access right now that comes through to the Armory. And so with the addition of the road connection, that would bring you down to the uh traffic signal. Um and the proximity of that, you know, restricting that access was was important and was part of their proposal.
And then um the existing site for MDT is in town here at the uh um just off of Highway two here. And I didn't quite catch from the Plan Commission discussion what what their plans are for that, when they move facilities here. Is are they keeping that for something else?
They would still be maintaining that facility, but those functions, um some mechanics and welding and so forth will go up to that location up north, um and bringing those on to their existing sites. They they currently u- utilize the site for a lot of purposes, but they would bring some of their disparate functions together in one location.
Plan is for all the maintenance facilities to move here, and the existing site will just be office.
Are they planning on any renovations there, or is?
Yeah.
They are?
Yeah.
Like new buildings and different things, or?
New buildings. There's a lot of, I don't wanna speak for them, but there's garage space and things that would be converted to office space, 'cause they actually have subleases all over town that they could then consolidate into that location. So there'll be more employees in office downtown. So, thank you.
I'm, thank you, Your Honor. I'm trying to remember where Quail Drive comes out, and you have the pork chop there for only for only right-hand turns coming out of there. Is the highway divided there, or is it further up to the north that there's the median, the grass?
It's further to the north.
It's further north. That's what I was thinking. Okay. So there's nothing that would, it's only the pork chop. It's nothing in in the center that would keep people from?
Correct. Right now, it's a full access, 'cause it's the only access that goes back in there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any public comments? Okay, counsel for motion on Resolution sixty-two fifty-one annexation. Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move Resolution number six-two-five-one, a resolution to provide for the alteration of the boundaries of the City of Kalispell by including therein as an annexation certain real property described as track two, a certificate of survey number six eight, uh I'm sorry, eight-six-seven-three, lying and being in government lot four, section nineteen, township twenty-nine north, range twenty-one west, PMM Flathead County, Montana. And as more particularly described on Exhibit A, to be known as MD- as MDT combination building addition number seven, I'm sorry, four seventy-eight, to zone said property in accordance with the Kalispell zoning ordinance and to declare an effective date.
Second. Second. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Dowd?
Dyslexia is interesting.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote?
Councilor Hunter?
Aye.
Councilor Nunley?
Aye.
Councilor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Councilor Graham?
Aye.
Councilor Dowd?
Aye.
Councilor Dahlman?
Aye.
Councilor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, aye. Next item would be a motion on ordinance nineteen thirty-seven. This would be the first reading for zoning. Ms. Gabriel?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move ordinance number one-nine-three-seven, an ordinance to amend section two-seven-point-zero-two-point-zero-one-zero, official zoning map, City of Kalispell zoning ordinance, ordinance number one-six-seven-seven, by zoning certain real property described as track two of certificate of survey number eight-six-seven-three, lying and being in government lot four, section nineteen, township twenty-nine north, range twenty-one west, PMM Flathead County, Montana, previously zoned county SAG-ten agricultural to city P one public, in accordance with the Kalispell Growth Policy Planet twenty-thirty-five, and to provide an effective date.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Nunley. Discussion on the motion? Roll call vote?
Councilor Hunter?
Aye.
Councilor Nunley?
Aye.
Councilor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Councilor Graham?
Aye.
Councilor Dowd?
Aye.
Councilor Dahlman?
Aye.
Councilor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Next would be a uh motion on the conditional use permit.
It's right there.
Okay.
Ms. Gabriel?
Your Honor, I would recommend the Kalispell City Council approve a request th- from the Montana Department of Transportation for conditional use permit KCU dash two-five dash zero-two, a conditional use permit to allow for the construction of the expansion of an existing maintenance facility, subject to nine conditions of approval, located at two-nine-zero-five Highway ninety-three north, and more particularly described to, as shown on Exhibit A, attached hereto and incorporated by reference.
Second.
Second? You, Mr. Graham?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um I'm gonna give away the game early and and say I will be supporting this, but uh with some reservations. Only that um this is the area of a lot of new development for the city, a lot of commercial use up there. There's gonna be a lot of residential use up there, and I just think it's unfortunate that kind of this is prime real estate for that area of development, uh to have kind of this this type of use right at that location, very visible to everybody coming in and out of that uh area. Um it's just not um very appealing visually. Um but I'm sure MDT owned this lot long before we moved our city up around it. Um and their current location in town is not also a very good location. Um and so i- it's kind of, there's nothing to be done about it, and obviously, they're not gonna use it for another purpose. Um this is what their needs are. Um and so I'll be supporting it, but I do think it's unfortunate that it's such a visible piece in, right in the kind of center of all this new development and commercial activity. Um uh just isn't isn't a great visually attractive uh use of the that property, but I will be supportive.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree with Mr. Hunter. It is unfortunate for that site, but having worked with DOT for thirty-five years on taking care of many of their sites from up Highway two east in town, they are very good neighbors. They take fine care of their property. I think the berm is nice. They keep things clean and nice. There's not a bunch of oil spills and debris laying around. They set their equipment up quite nicely. Um most of it covered. Um I I think, I I agree with much of what you say, but they are very good neighbors to have.
Besides, if they wanted to sell this property and buy something different, they'd probably have to go back to the legislature, and they'd screw it up, so. Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Nunley?
Well, Jed, I think from that, I I'm struggling anytime we do a CUP at this point, right? Any conditions that we can place on anything on a property uh cannot always be upheld, so uh but I totally agree with you. I I see and have watched and been evidenced of MDT's uh property usage and and know many people that work there. And so I think for that reason, I can support this CUP.
Other discussion? Have a roll call vote?
Councilor Hunter?
Aye.
Councilor Nunley?
Aye.
Councilor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Councilor Graham?
Aye.
Councilor Dowd?
Aye.
Councilor Dahlman?
Aye.
Councilor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Next item, Resolution sixty-two fifty-two, Aspen Creek Preliminary Platte Extension. This resolution considers extending this platte at five-twenty-three-mile drive for two years.
Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, again, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Director of Development Services, PJ Sorenson, for the staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a request by Five-twenty-three-mile-drive Associates to extend the preliminary platte for Aspen Creek West for two years. Uh the subdivision includes sixty residential lots. There were thirty-one detached single-family and twenty-nine townhomes, along with roads, parks, and open space on about twenty acres. In terms of its location, it's right off the south side of Three Mile, um right between Spring Creek Estates to the west and Aspen Creek to the east. Uh the preliminary platte was approved July fifth, twenty-twenty-two, uh under Resolution sixty-eighty-one, and condition eight, the preliminary platte states that the preliminary platte shall be valid for a period of three years from the date of approval, which is in accordance with Kalispell subdivision regulations. Uh accordingly, the expiration date for the preliminary platte is July fifth, twenty-twenty-five. Um the Kalispell subdivision regulations also allows the subdivider request a two-year extension of the preliminary platte. Uh this is the first such request for the subdivision. If the extension is not granted, the applicant will be required to go back through the major preliminary platte process prior to final platte approval. Uh they have already completed most of the work on the site, uh and they are likely to be submitting for final platte later this summer. Um and so effectively, this would be just a relatively short extension on that platte approval. Uh it is recommended that the Kalispell City Council extend the Aspen Creek West preliminary platte for the additional two years. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Any public comment on Resolution sixty-two fifty-two? See, none. Look to counsel for a motion. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move for approval of Resolution number six-two-five-two, a resolution approving a two-year extension to the preliminary platte of Aspen Creek West subdivision located at five-twenty-three-mile-drive in section eleven, township twenty-eight north, range twenty-two west, PMM Flathead County, Montana.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Gabriel. Discussion on the motion? Roll call vote?
Councilmember Hunter?
Aye.
Councilmember Nunley?
Aye.
Councilor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Councilor Graham?
Aye.
Councilor Dowd?
Aye.
Councilor Dahlman?
Aye.
Councilor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Next item, Resolution of Intent sixty-two fifty-three, Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant, Kalispell Main Street Concept Design. This resolution considers setting a public hearing for May nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, to hear from the public about this project and whether to move forward with the grant application.
Mr. Russell, presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, basically, uh the description states it all. All this does is sets uh May nineteenth as a date for a public hearing to open it up for public comment related to the potential grant application for the Safe Streets for All Grant. So happy to answer any questions council may have, but this just sets that date for a public hearing.
Any questions for staff? Any public comments on the Resolution of Intent sixty-two fifty-three? None. Look to counsel for a motion. Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move Resolution number six-two-five-three, a resolution of intent to set a public hearing on the Main Street Concept Design Memorandum, seeking input from the general public regarding the proposed project and whether to move forward with a Safe Streets and Roads for All Implementation Grant for the City of Kalispell, and directing the city clerk to provide notice thereof.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Gabriel. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I think, as we heard this evening, there's a lot of interest in this that's uh started brewing, and so I'm interested in hearing more, um 'cause I I think there's more out there. We'll hear more about it. So uh having official public hearing on it uh would be a good opportunity to hear more from the public on it.
Ms. Gabriel?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um I agree. The public hearing will be um a great opportunity. I I really want to encourage all of you here and everyone watching to please go back to our meeting last week where the consultants were here and presented that plan. Um a number of things were addressed that there were questions on tonight. Snow removal was addressed. The sidewalks were addressed. Diagonal parking was addressed. So please look at the actual um meeting and discussion, and if you have questions this coming week, I'm sure staff would be happy to answer them. Any of us would be happy to answer as well. So um do your homework and and see what it, what the plan would actually be, and also understand how grant money is used. When you apply for it, it's for a specific purpose, and has to be used for the purpose that you received it on. So just my two cents to make it more understandable so that people can get their questions answered. Thank you.
Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um this is uh, once again, just to set the public hearing, we want to hear from the public on this. on this, we've already heard from the public on some of it, whether you're for or against, this is a great opportunity for you to come, give your comments, so we can take it into the record and think about that kind of stuff. I really appreciate what Counselor Gabrielle said about the, this, and the, the work session that we had on it, which was very informative. A couple of things that were addressed, you know, we talked about diagonal parking, it's not in the plan, so there is no diagonal parking, so if that's your stick point, it's not there. And also, we spent a lot of time on snow, where the snow is going to go, and we also talked heavily about what's going to happen to the adjacent streets if this happens, so it's a good informative meeting for you to watch, it's online, available to you, please look, watch the, the work session on this, it'll really give you more detail. You're still free to be opposed or for this, but be as informed as you can. Thanks.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yep, everything, everybody's already said that, I just want to add that this is, this is a process, this is a legal process that we have to go through, too. This isn't just something that we came up with, hey, let's go and vote and put a resolution out there for calling for a public hearing. I think for, from what I'm seeing, you know, from some of the comments out there and social media and stuff where, you know, people don't understand the process, you know, why do they have to go and have a meeting to go and have a meeting? To go and vote to have a meeting? It's a legal process, so I understand how it can, the wheels of government turn really slow, so I understand how it can be confusing, but to those people that are commenting online that don't understand the process, that either are for or against this, like Mr. Dowd said, you need to be here commenting, and the reason why I go through and I support this is because even tonight we've heard, you know, some public comment, and it's been good on both sides, from what I've heard, and I'm completely supporting going to a public hearing, because I definitely need to hear more from the community on what they, what they think about this plan, and this is going to be a big vote, so I hope people take the opportunity to show up and have their comments heard.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nutley?
Aye.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, Resolution 6254, Park Reservation and Recreation Fees. This resolution considers revising the recreation and park fee schedule. Mr. Russell, presentation?
Hey, Mayor and Council, as you're aware, at our last work session, we went over the recommended reservation and recreation fees to implement as part of this next year's budget process. I'll go ahead and turn it over to our Proctor Recreation Director Chad Fincher, just to give a broader overview of what we're facing and that process that goes into it as we do this every few years, to bring our fees in alignment with basically just a business model, so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fincher.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, as Ms. Russell said, every two to three years, we do come in front of council to look at our fee structures, to make sure that we are covering direct costs of programs and that any, any anomalies that have come up through programming are being addressed. So, recreation, we do go through it through two different lenses, we do treat each program as an individual business. One of the first things we do is a market analysis, what does a program provide to the community, what are other like programs providing to the community, seeing where we stand in that, in that area. After that, we do a cost analysis, and we look at the direct costs of the program to make sure that the fee structures that we are presenting are covering the costs of those programs. One thing that we did discuss last week at the workshop was that School District 5 is looking at implementing a facility fee for the use of their facilities. As we all know, we don't have a lot of facility, indoor facilities for us to operate out of, so we do rely heavily, heavily on School District 5 properties in order to run our programs. So, again, those, we, we took their proposed fee schedule, and we included it in our cost analysis that we present to you tonight. As far as the pool, we adjusted them 8% across the board. We know that if we were to actually try to recover the cost of operating the pool, we'd be closer to $17 per person for admittance, but with that, we think that we would have a drastic drop in attendance, so we did do an 8% adjustment across the board on that. Park reservations is the one that we did change the most, and, and that's just in the structure. As stated at last, at the workshop, the, the online registration software doesn't, doesn't acknowledge how our fee structures are currently, so we, we worked with our engineers, and then we worked through the model that is available through the software, and we have come up with an abbreviated fee schedule that we also took back, took and looked, reflect on last year's reservations to see how it would affect them, minus the 8% that is being proposed. There was only one reservation that had a significant cost, and it was a reunion that had seven hours of reservation time. We feel that that, that one had, I think it was a few hundred dollars extra, it would have cost them with this new model, that if presented, they would just simply roll it back to a six-hour rental and still be within a few dollars of what their reservation fee was. And that's on the structure of it, but we did propose an 8% fee on that one on our park schedule, just because everything is, has an inflationary cost to it. I did take some, took some time, there was a question about how many participants we've had through our programs. Currently, we are at 27,000 participants through our programs, and that's from July 1 of last year till today. Of course, we'll have now through June 30, we'll have, see a little bit more of an increase as we get closer to summer, and our summer programs start to fill up. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? We just had a work session on this for quite a while on last Monday, so anything come up since then? Okay. Any public comments on Resolution 6254? Seeing none, look to council for a motion. Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move we approve Resolution Number 6254, Resolution amending Resolution 6124, fixing parks and recreation fees to be charged by the city of Kalispell Parks and Recreation Department, and declaring an effective date.
Second. Ms. Fisher, discussion on the motion? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just as stated at our work session, nobody likes to increase fees, rather not do it, but at the end of the day, costs do go up for us, for the city, and we do have to try to recoup those costs as much as we can within reason, and I think these are reasonable adjustments, and it keeps our fees reasonable relative to similar programs offered, you know, privately or outside of the city, so I think it's reasonable adjustments to the fees.
Mr. Fisher?
I agree with Mr. Hunter, and thank you for the numbers back, Chad, 27,000 participants, that's huge, amazing programs, I'm glad there's support from the council for these programs in the past, and agreeing with Mr. Hunter, costs go up. I almost wished that we would look at this yearly and maybe go up 3% or a smaller amount, because costs go up, even with labor, and you're labor intensive for all the camps and programs that you put on, but certainly understood to have to jump it to 8%. It's, it's sad for some folks, but it's just the cost of doing business and the increase that everyone is facing out there, so, again, just compliments to 27,000 participants, you serving 27,000 participants, that's just huge, kudos to Parks and Rec.
Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to mention that I am super critical of any fee adjustment, I've been through line by line for every single piece of this. These are, these are like one of the only programs that the city runs that we actually get compliments on, so definitely worth saving what we have.
All kinds of compliments on 411, Mr. Dowd.
I, I don't see those, apparently. Anyway, these are things that the people of Kalispell really appreciate. One of the items that I've always taken a really good look at is the swimming pool, which is a great benefit for the area, but we never make up that money. This is something we provide that really, that I think is really important, that we give kids a chance to learn how to swim, I mean, that's a lifelong safety issue for, for everybody, and I appreciate this, but know that I did look at this with a fine-tooth comb, asked a lot of questions, and if you want to go back and look at our work session, you can see me being annoying. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Ms. Gabriel?
I won't go off script like Mr. Dowd, but I just wanted to reiterate, too, that it's always hard for us to raise fees, but it's really hard to raise fees for things like this where, where people are looking for alternatives to childcare and trying to make sure their kids are safe, so we did look hard at it. The 8% did hurt, I agree 100% with you, Mr. Fisher, that I'd like to look at it more often, as much as it's not super fun to raise them, it might be easier to raise them in smaller increments, so we did look real hard at it, and unfortunately, I think we're required to have a balanced budget, aren't we? Isn't that, isn't that a deal?
Not like Congress.
Yeah, exactly, so, thank you.
Other discussion? Roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nutley?
Aye.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, Recommendation for Award of the 4 Mile Drive Path Project. This item considers awarding this project to Strouds Contracting in the amount of $1,054,906 with contingencies. Mr. Russell, presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as you're aware, we've received a grant for this segment of sidewalk connectivity, you know, a large majority of this is in front of city-owned property up at Kid Sports, creating that connection as we travel west to multiple residential components and areas through that. Through the bidding process, it come over, up significantly over budget. I'll turn it over in a minute to our Deputy Director of Public Works, Keith Haskins, to give a few options and alternatives to address that and keep the project going, because some of the options were to kill it and to face different components with it, but Keith did come up with some available options that are, will be presented tonight, that we'd recommend moving forward with, because it makes that important connection with it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Keith for the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor and Council. Public Works recently opened the bids for the 4 Mile Drive Path Transportation Alternatives Project. Unfortunately, as Mr. Russell indicated, the bids we received are higher than anticipated in the TA grant application. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief background on the project, provide the bid results, review the options following the bid opening, and finally, provide a recommendation to council. As you may recall, in 2016, the bypass construction was completed, including 4 Mile Drive. A rural road section was completed between Northland Drive and Highway 93 bypass, with the understanding that upgrades to an urban section would happen as adjacent development occurred. The 4 Mile Drive road construction included a multi-use path which connected to the bypass on the west, and a sidewalk connection to Stillwater Road, but the east end of the path did not connect to the pedestrian features. The main reason for this undesirable termination into 4 Mile Drive was that Kid Sports facility would have taken the 4 Mile Drive design into a Section 4F process, because it's a park. According to MDT, there was not time to go through that process and still meet their schedule on the bypass construction, so this connection was left to the city to figure out in the future. In recent years, both Tree Line Road and Foxglove Drive have been connected to the 4 Mile Drive as part of development of the Bloomstone subdivision, and since the completion of 4 Mile Drive connection to Stillwater Road, no safe connection has been made to, between the Kid Sports multi, multi-use path and the 4 Mile Drive path, nor between the neighborhood south of 4 Mile Drive. This is a picture of 4 Mile Drive looking northwest at Foxglove Drive, and as you can see, the west or the left side of the intersection has been widened and improved in urban cross-section with curb and gutter and storm drainage. The east or the right side of Foxglove Drive intersection remains unimproved. The reason the Bloomstone subdivision did not improve their remaining frontage was because in February of 2023, the developer of Bloomstone entered into an agreement with the city of Kalispell to provide a cash and lieu payment for the subdivision's required improvements as a local match needed for the transportation alternatives grant through MDT. Their cash and lieu was based on the estimated cost of the improvements they would have been required to complete on their frontage west of Foxglove Drive. The proposed project would add curb and gutter between Foxglove Drive and the west approach of Champion Way, as well as a multi-use path and Boulevard area. A portion of the path would require retaining wall and handrail due to, to the required fill height to support the path. The project needed to add a safe connection into the neighborhood to the south, and the path would need to connect to the existing multi-use path inside of Kid Sports. This is a planned view of the final design approved by MDT. The original cost estimate for the project was based off of a tiered landscaping block retaining wall concept. Unfortunately, to construct this type of retaining wall, the slopes would have to be laid back significantly into the roadway during construction, which would have had heavily impacted the roadway and existing utilities in the roadway. Additionally, the retaining wall had to be structurally designed in accordance with MDT's load and resistance factor design process, so this led to a cast-in-place concrete wall. For continuity and aesthetics, the project design intended to match Bloomstone's existing retaining wall, as shown here in this picture, to match their concrete stamping and color, which the proposed retaining wall would then connect to. The connection to the neighborhood south of 4 Mile Drive was originally planned to occur at Northland Drive, however, the cross slope for a crosswalk at that location is too steep to meet the requirements of ADA or ProWAG, so to find flatter ground and good visibility for the pet-actuated rectangular rapid flashing beacons, the proposed crossing was moved to the east leg of the intersection with Champion Way. Concurrent with the project design, staff completed a speed study on 4 Mile Drive, which recommended the installation of traffic calming features on 4 Mile Drive. We hope to incorporate a raised crosswalk at this location to serve as both an improved pedestrian crossing safety feature and as a traffic calming measure. The raised crosswalk was added to the project as an alternative, which would only be approved if the grant funding was adequate to include it. Bids were open for the project on April 24. Four responsive bids were received, as shown, and fortunately, all bids were significantly higher than the engineer's estimate. Further, the TA program does not allow the bids to be awarded if more than 15% above the engineer's estimate. Following the bid opening, city staff and engineering consultant met with MDT to discuss, to discuss options. The first option is to revise the engineer's estimate and increase the local match. In this option, the engineer would evaluate the bids received, interview bidders, and review other available data to determine if the engineer's estimate should be revised. In order to move forward, the engineer's estimate would need to be revised to within 15% of the bids received. In this case, two items were significantly higher than the engineer's estimate, these were the costs for the retaining wall and the handrail on the project. Additionally, a lump-sum bid item for embankment in place was also modified up based on the engineer review. In addition to the modified engineer's estimate, the city would need to provide any additional required match, and finally, under Option 1, MDT would have to approve the additional project costs. Option 2 would be to reject and rebid the project. If there were items which could be removed from the base bid project in order to provide substantial savings, or if we felt that the bids didn't reflect the current market, we could reject the bids and rebid the project. In this case, there are no items which can be removed and still make the project viable. Additionally, the lowest three bids were within 9% of each other, signaling that the bids are reflective of the local cost to build the project. The third and final option would be to reject the bids and terminate the project. If we take this option, the city will be responsible to reimburse the federal money spent thus far, amounting to about $60,000. Option 1 is recommended to council contingent upon MDT approval to approve the project. RPA has reviewed the bid items and amended the RPA has reviewed the bid items and amended their engineer's estimate for the base bid to nine hundred and thirty two thousand seven hundred and ninety one dollars and seventy five cents, which brings the estimate within the required fifteen percent margin. MDT has preliminary indicated preliminarily indicated that additional TA funds can likely accommodate the increased cost if the city provides the additional required match and recommends award of the project. Based on the lowest responsive bid, the city would need to allocate about forty six thousand dollars, and city staff recommends using a combination of available funds, including parks unallocated cash and lieu funds and contingency funds from the general fund. In summary, if council approves the award based on the revised engineer's estimate tonight, the one million fifty five thousand dollar project can be completed with a city cost of approximately forty six thousand dollars, since the remaining portion of required local match was already provided by the Bloomstone development. Staff intends to try to negotiate cost-saving measures, such as removing the concrete stamping and potentially finding a lighter gauge handrail if approved by MDT. That can only happen after the project is awarded. Staff is happy to proceed with any other option or is otherwise directed by council, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, your honor. Can you go back to the utilization of cash and lieu funds, the slide that you showed with the general fund dollars and cash and lieu funds? Eighteen thousand and unallocated cash and lieu funds generally comes from that immediate area from the developer who chose to pay cash and lieu, correct?
Cash and lieu is just a fund balance we have across the board with that. So I don't, these aren't specifically earmarked for any specific area. I don't know if you have any further information related to that, Chad?
No, generally, generally, what they're cash and lieu now, we allocate it towards a specific park or project. These were funds that have been on the books for some time that we haven't identified a specific project and felt that this was a something that we should put it towards.
And explain, if you would, general fund contingency. Is those dollars left over from current budget in Parks and Rec? Explain that to me a little bit more.
So we have a line item in general government for contingency, and thirty thousand dollars is typically what we budget in there on an annual basis. So this would come out of there. We have not spent anything on that fund related to it. If we did not have that, we just recommend a line item out of there and just have a lower fund balance at the end of the year. Just happens we have a line item for contingency for similar things just like this if they do come up during the year. We are almost at the end of the fiscal year and have not used that for any specific item.
Thank you very much. Other questions for staff? Any public comment? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, your honor. I move that we authorize the award of the base bid contract to Strouds. Is it Strouds or Strods?
I think it's Strouds.
Strouds contracting in the amount of one million fifty four thousand nine hundred and six dollars contingent upon MDT approval and availability of TA grant funding for eighty six point five eight percent of the total cost.
Second. Second, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Discussion. Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Yeah, it's kind of unfortunate situation. It's not a lot of good options. But of the three presented, I think it's accurate to say that this is probably the market cost of this, and so we're not likely to see something different in rebidding it. I think it's a really important safety feature that's needed on Four Mile, so the idea of banding the project is is not an option for me. I just think safety wise, it's too important for the community. So I I don't really like this idea of going back and getting a revised engineer estimate to kind of beat what we need to to go for that grant. But it seems like the best option, given the circumstances, so. And I think cash wise from the city, that forty six thousand seems very doable, and we have the funds available, so that makes sense. So, yeah, I'll be supporting it. Just the safety factor alone is it makes it worthwhile.
Mr. Dowd?
You know, I historically have really not liked dipping into our contingency, but this is kind of a little ridiculous piece that needs to be put in there. It may not be critical today, but very soon, there's going to be development on the north side of that street, and there'll be kids going back and forth on their bikes or walk into Kid Sports, and this is going to be a critical piece of infrastructure at that point, so I'm glad we're getting it done now.
Mr. Nunnally?
I would just echo along with both these comments. I drive Four Mile every once in a while, as I know others here do. And sometimes, some of the things I see coming out at that terminus, coming out onto Four Mile Drive, is flat out scary, so I I agree. I don't like the going back and getting a revised estimate. Makes me wonder about the engineer's estimate to begin with. But I I support this, and I think it it needs to move forward, so.
The only comment, I live just up the hill from this, and it's needed now.
Yeah.
The issue of pedestrians back and forth along Four Mile is is a growing concern as we as we know. The speed issue is nice, it's going to be nice, I'm not going to have to spend every Saturday, Sunday acting like a pilot cart twenty five, just making everyone behind me mad, but now I'm the I'm the little old guy from Ferris Bueller driving slow and wandering back and forth across the street to slow everyone down. I think the engineer's estimate, if we look back at the original design, it was block walls. And the minute you go to cast in place concrete retaining walls, that changes the whole nature of of how you're doing the project. So amending the budget based on what's actually feasible without losing losing too much parkland, but also interfering with utilities, I can see where that that amendment needed to be made, and that is a change in the scope of the project, so it makes sense to see an amendment on that. Nice it came in where it needed to be. But I also do support spending the money out of the contingency. This is one of those things. We put it there for a reason. Every now and then, these things come up, and it's nice to know that we have the latitude to do that. So I'm going to be supporting this, looking forward to seeing it happen, and be like two weeks construction time, right, guys? Okay, good. All right. So with that, can I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunnally?
Aye.
Counselor Gabrielle?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Dolman?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. City manager report?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just a couple of items. First one, tomorrow is the last day for school election, just as a reminder for anyone listening how important it is to vote, and so always remind people of that. Next week, work session, we'll have the parking lot that's been addressed in public comment. Also, have a review of the annual, but five year, we have an update on impact fees and fire and police impact fees, or will be before council, so we'll take over that. And work session next Monday, finishing up items in the legislative session, trying to figure out exactly how that's going to impact us, especially since there are numerous property tax issues. Some of them, I think, may kick in this year. We're trying to get clarification. Some of them are the following fiscal year. So as we start our budget, workshops tomorrow and Wednesday. Cannot stress enough that it is a preliminary budget to get through that process, that obviously we'll have some changing factors as we get to the final budget within August, but we do have those budget workshops that start tomorrow, tomorrow and Wednesday at six o'clock. And on the last thing, on Wednesday, when we'll be reviewing the police and fire, our new fire chief, who started today, will be present at that meeting, so be able to introduce Chief Hagan to the council at that point in time, and that is all I have, your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Council, any reports? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, your honor. Just some some comments from things that we talked about tonight, with that Safe Streets I hope nobody thinks that this plan is new. The bypass was actually implemented in order to provide for this. It was something that needed to happen first, right? So this is something we've been driving towards for many, multiple decades. But anyway, we had public participation education and public comment on this plan taken in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, and twenty twenty three. And another piece of information, the grant in question can only be used to provide for pedestrian safety, which includes traffic calming. We touched on one of my favorite things tonight, and this is a little bit different than we talked about earlier with the front yard stuff, but you can have a front yard garden. And if, in my case, I have a very small backyard and a very big front yard, it makes a lot of sense, I'm pretty excited about that. And I was thinking about something else, price of eggs is ridiculous right now. Did you know that you can have chickens? And Mr. City Manager, I can't remember whether it's three or five chickens, but I know it's one of those two numbers.
Nine. I think it's nine.
All right, offhand.
No roosters.
Right.
We're in some rough economic times right now. It's probably going to get worse, so these are things that you can do to supplement how much you're spending on food items, and I highly support anybody that wants to do this. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Yeah, I guess just touch on the Safe Streets, echo what's been said. There's a lot kind of online that that is not accurate, so echo what's said about watching some of the past meetings and and finding out what really the plan is and what's intended to do and and so on. And we will have the public hearing and have more discussion on it, so I'll save the rest of my comments for for after we go through that process. We did have a public comment asking about our policy on police use of translation services. This was a question I posed via email, and we got a response, so I was just hoping somebody did have that comment publicly, if we could have that that response this evening as well.
Yeah, currently, the City of Kalispell Police Department uses a subscription online phone service for translation services, that simple. It's not a for or against or anything related to any other agency, and as I can refer to in my response, I would be advise people to be cautious of conflating different circumstances. And, you know, we will continue to use mutual aid whenever feasible for any investigation or law enforcement activities with any of our mutual aid partners. So I just think that's important to state, that I think some of the things we've heard is really trying to conflate two different circumstances, and, you know, if there's any allegations against the City of Kalispell, we'll be happy to address those as they emerge. But we use mutual aid in a variety of ways, and I think it's important to continue to use that through all of our different partners, police, fire, EMS, wherever it may occur.
Thank you.
Anything, nothing, nothing, Ms. Gabriel?
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to make one more comment regarding Mr. Hunter had brought up a few weeks ago or last week, whenever it was, about assistance for folks that need to have vehicles moved. And I know Mr. Russell elaborated on that a bit from the county standpoint. There is also an opportunity with one of the wrecking yards in town that has an arrangement with a couple tow companies. So if you're in that situation, call us and we'll get you connected for that assistance if you need help getting getting a junked vehicle out of your yard. And then the second thing I wanted to say was if you all didn't get enough tonight and want to join us tomorrow night and Wednesday night for the real work that happens, we'll be talking about budgets, and those meetings are very exciting and, boy.
Best meetings we do.
The best meetings we do all year.
Numbers.
Thank you.
Speaking of numbers. So now that we're done with the state of Montana, we have budget. How much did the budget go up at the state level?
I've heard five hundred million.
Five hundred million dollars, is it percentage wise?
Eighteen percent, right?
About eighteen percent. Now, I'm not sure if that's just the general fund for the state, but what is eighteen percent anywhere close to half of the three-year average rate of inflation, Mr. Russell?
I don't have my calculator.
Okay. Just like to remind everybody, city levels, we are limited to how much we can increase a general fund budget. Half the average, three-year average rate of inflation is what we're limited to. So every year that goes by, and we have inflation, which is pretty much every year, it's been especially bad last few years, we can't keep up with that with just increasing taxes. So I find it interesting that we take the ridicule and the abuse of those elected to Helena, and they walk out, and they're going to tell me they're increasing their budget. I cannot wait to see how much is the general fund budget, because I'd love to have one of them come and explain to us. Maybe we can get Courtney to come, and she'll explain what happened in the budget process. It would be good. I'll I'll inquire to see if she could do that, because I think it would be interesting to see what was her experience going through the legislature this time and what it was like putting together a budget, because, dare I say, before you criticize others, look in the mirror. And that's all I have for this evening. That, adjourned.